Good evening and welcome to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan. In the Battle Creek City Commission meeting for February 18th, 2025. It is 7:01 and we welcome you this evening to our meeting. First, we're going to have a moment of silence for our invocation and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to call upon Commissioner Chris Simmons to lead us in the pledge this evening. So please stand if you're able to for a moment of silence for our invocation. Commissioner Chris Simmons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Commissioner Chris Simmons for leading us in the pledge. And now I'd like to call upon our city clerk to read the roll.
Commissioner Katsarski Smith here. Commissioner LaCoss.
Here.
Commissioner Lance. Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Mayor Banky.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for attending. Next item on our agenda is beautiful Battle Creek Awards and I'm going to ask the interim city manager to help us on that.
Yes, thank you Mayor. First from NPC 11 Ward 4, we have a nomination for Dr. Kim Anderson and Kevin Laughters at 116 Edgbrook Drive.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Well deserved.
Well, welcome. Good evening. First, we'd like to ask you some questions about the sewer lift station. Do you know anything about that?
It is so big. It is so big. It's semi-macaulay. It's a mess. It's actually our survival bunker.
It's not really up on the house. It's just our survival bunker, so.
We thank everyone for your talents. I mean, this is a two-year deal and it's huge for Battle Creek and Emmett Township and also for Leroy Township.
Is this why we're giving this award?
Yes. It's tolerated all across.
We can play the league.
But though really, our beautiful Battle Creek Awards are an event that takes place once a month, I believe, and it really recognizes people in the community that stands out and who are within their neighborhood as well. Believe it or not, if you get green grass in your neighborhood, everyone else will get green grass. Senseless how we are. So we thank you for doing your utmost at transforming your home. Congratulations, the people of your neighborhood, and it's a great neighborhood. Chris has had me over there a couple of times on some problems, so I really appreciate everything you've done. God bless you. Thanks. Thank you very much. Will you be able to do it next month?
Next month.
Congratulations.
That was yesterday.
Ted, do we have any more?
Yes, Mayor, from NPC 1 Ward 2, we have a nomination for Serene Daughl Davis at 90 Lathrop Avenue. I'm not sure that they were able to join us this evening. And finally, from NPC 1 Ward 3, a nomination for the city of Battle Creek Fire Station Number 3 on Cliff Street.
Do we have any of the firefighters here? We have the Italian chief, yes.
I am calling upon you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you. Thank you Ted. Next item on our agenda are some presentations. The first one, I'm going to turn it over to our interim city manager to introduce.
Thank you Mayor. Yes, this evening we have representative here from Star Commonwealth to provide their wrap-up on their ARPA community-funded project.
Hello, my name is Greg Strand. I'm the Vice President of Advancement at Star Commonwealth. I'm just going to do a quick introduction to the ARPA funding that was provided to Star Commonwealth for our Student Resilience and Empowerment Center. It's a program that operates out of the Battle Creek Family YMCA. If you want to go to the second slide. Just some quick highlights from the funding that was provided. I know not everybody here was on the commission at the time, but city of Battle Creek provided $170,000 to help launch this middle school program. Because it was ARPA funds, the funds were primarily all invested in capital improvements at the YMCA, so the majority of the funding went to HVAC upgrades to make the environment and the rooms that the program is operating out of more habitable. And then we were also able to update several classrooms, therapeutic spaces, again, that operate the program. These were all investments in the Battle Creek Family YMCA. And then there were some other capital improvements, furniture and equipment and things like that for the program. So I'm going to hand it over to Katie Carpenter, who's the Director of Youth Empowerment Programs, and she's going to tell you a little about the program and then a short video just to highlight the impact. Thank you.
Hi, so we launched the REC in the year 2022 in partnership with Battle Creek Public Schools and it has since grown to serve seven Calhoun County School Districts. Like Greg said, we operate out of the YMCA. The REC is a program that is 100% free to children and families. We work with school districts to cover a lot of the cost of having kids come to the program. If you can go to the next slide. It's an eight to 10 week program. It's five days a week. We have two sessions. One session is in the morning, one session is in the afternoon, and school districts can decide which session they want to send their kids to. At no expense to the family, all participants get a free YMCA membership for a year for their entire family. And the program itself includes a snack. We have a certified teacher on staff who helps students with schoolwork. We also utilize the spaces at the Y to enhance their social emotional capabilities. Next slide. Students that participate in the REC have access to behavioral health services through Star Commonwealth and also through Summit Point. And as the, with them being in the program, we're able to kind of cut through some barriers for families and get them activated and services a lot quicker than if the families had gone and done that on their own. The program itself involves guided movement activities, relationship building activities. We have access to the pool and the gym at the YMCA. We also do structured movement activities with the students, so some yoga. Last week we did, last week we did some TikTok dances without using the actual TikTok app. We had somebody come in and just teach some of the students some of the dances, just to get them up and get them moving and trying something different. We use a lot of sensory tools and strategies to help kids be able to function better when they go back to their home schools. You can go to the next one. We're going to show you just a really quick video that we did last year with some of our students, just talking about the opportunity of going to the REC program and what they got out of the program. And through that, you'll be able to see the spaces, which we were able to enhance with those ARPA dollars.
Sorry, I got to find my mouse.
I think that they do really good with bonding.
It helps me because I know the people there are nice and they usually help me with my feelings.
I feel comfortable talking about my oceans because when I'm around the REC staff, they tell me that like there's people that will listen to me.
I almost went to a program, the staff people there were like, so you have depression, this and this and this, and they weren't really as, they didn't seem as sincere as the REC people are. I love the people here.
Biggest thing from the REC that I'm going to take back is probably the motivation y'all gave me to get through my day and like get my work done and stuff. Like when class goes by slow, normally it's because you're not doing stuff, but like when you're actually doing your work, it goes by really fast.
To be honest, the REC taught me a lot of patience. People would test me in my group and I felt like I learned that skill from here. It's like mental stamina, the ability to keep going even though it's hard.
Even if I may not like somebody, I'm still going to communicate with them as and if they're a human being because that's just how I am now.
There's a lot of resources that I can have and it can help me calm down.
I have a really good relationship with a lot of the REC staff. Between me and Mr. John, we've been able to play guitar. Me and Mr. Tony, he's the one who taught me how to play the drums. And I've also had some of that experience with some of the students here. I was teaching a boy here on how to drum. Makes me feel really good because I feel like that talent should be passed down, not just kept in one place.
It's really nice to help someone with something they're struggling with. I like the staff and how it exists to help people that have problems with their emotions and stuff. I think I'd like to work here one day.
You may not see your progress while you're there, but after, you're going to look at yourself and be like, whoa, this is kind of weird. I'm like a whole new person.
Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you so much.
We want to thank you for your report. You did a nice job. Thanks. Ted, our second group?
Yes, this evening we, and I don't think that Whitney Wardell was able to make it. Lisa Ripper is here from Neighborhoods Incorporated to do their ARPA project report.
Hello. As Ted said, I am Lisa Ripper. I'm the Finance Director at Neighborhoods Inc. Battle Creek. And so this is our ARPA end of project report. The mission of Neighborhoods Inc. is to promote stable, healthy homes and neighborhoods by providing services and educational programs based on, focused on low to medium income families in the greater Battle Creek area. NIBC's vision is for all families to have healthy, stable homes and neighborhoods. Our commitment is to addressing housing instability in Battle Creek through a multifaceted approach. We provide housing assistance in the form of eviction diversion advocacy, homeownership education and support, tenant-based rental assistance, homelessness prevention, and as well as housing navigation and intensive case management support. In addition to being the Housing Assessment Resource Agency of Calhoun County, Neighborhoods Inc. manages, owns and manages approximately 40 affordable rental units. We provide home rehab services. We have a small mortgage loan servicing portfolio and we also offer homebuyer education. With the support of ARPA, we were able to hire an in-house finance director, enhancing our financial management capabilities and providing direct oversight of our active grants. Previously, we had a firm that we had contracted with, so we were able to bring the functions in-house, get a little more into the weeds with things. And the strategic move allowed us to optimize our spending, maximize funding impact and secure new grant opportunities to better serve the community. We were able to apply for a whole new world of grants once we were able to handle our financial operations in-house. During the ARPA grant period, we serviced almost 1,700 clients with programs such as the tenant-based rental assistance, housing navigation, shelter diversion, emergency solutions, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. We want the community to know that these efforts are not just services, they are lifelines. By intervening with eviction diversion and offering pathways to homeownership, we are helping families stay in their homes and achieve long-term stability. Programs like these ensure that individuals facing financial or personal crises have a safety net to keep them off the streets. The completion of these initiatives has a profound impact on curbing homelessness rates in Battle Creek. Beyond the numbers, the outcome is seen in the lives transformed. Children who can focus on school instead of housing uncertainty, adults who can pursue work opportunities and neighborhoods that thrive as housing stability leads to stronger, more connected communities.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Are there any questions of the commission? Once again, thank you. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
That will conclude our ARPA reports for this year. All additional reports will be received electronically. Ted, would you like to introduce our next speaker?
Yes, thank you Mayor. This evening, I'm going to turn it over to our Revenue Services Director, Erin Kuhn, who will present our interim financial statements through December 31st, 2024.
Thank you Ted. Thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners for the opportunity to present and discuss with you the interim financial statements for the six months ending December 31st, 2024. I'd also like to offer a heartfelt thanks to our finance team, who are working hard to implement our new ERP software, which we're going to go live on here in a couple of weeks, but have still made the time and effort to get things posted in a timely fashion. PDF of my report is attached to your agenda. The report highlights general fund, but also presents major and local street funds and water and sewer funds. I probably sound like a broken record at this point, but I'll continue to belabor the point. Don't get too excited about the bottom line number, the $8.7 million profit that you see at the bottom of the general fund income statement. Our financial picture in the general fund especially looks healthy this time of year due to all of our property taxes being booked in the first and second quarter of the year. This sometimes makes the 50% formula, six out of 12 months, a more difficult benchmark when looking at total revenues. Income tax revenues have increased compared to the same six-month time period a year ago, 2.74%. We continue, you know, this is a revenue item that we continue to monitor closely, given how a number of our local employers continue to utilize different options for work, be it remote or hybrid or fully in-person. The table in my narrative report shows a detail by revenue category of the 2.74% increase. Miscellaneous revenues are 120% higher than the same time period one year ago. Excited about that. Excluding property taxes, the remainder of revenue is at 47.96% of budget and is a decrease of 6.5% or a little over 1.2 million compared to the same time period one year ago. This is due to the recognition of grant revenue from the Protect My Pension Grant that we've talked about a number of times, that this number, that grant has, you know, skewed our year-over-year comparisons in a number of funds. Included in the narrative report are several charts comparing revenues and expenditures to the prior year for the general fund, major local streets and water and sewer. Sewer expenditures decreased dramatically over the prior year based on a number of completed capital improvement projects. Water expenditures increased slightly based on ongoing capital projects that we have going on. And I'd like to conclude with an update about ARPA. As the commission may recall, ARPA funds were required to be fully obligated by December 31st of 2024. I'm pleased to report that all ARPA funds were fully obligated by the deadline. A special thank you to our Budget Officer, Barb Deering, for handling the reporting duties and keeping things on track so we could, you know, so we can meet that deadline, so we don't have to pay any money back. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Erin? Erin, we want to say thank you very much. We'll see you next quarter.
All right. Thank you Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions?
There were none.
Thank you very much. Next item would be petitions, communications and reports?
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any specific agenda item. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any specific agenda item, please raise your hand and I will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You will have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and your address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. Is there anyone here? Yes, Joe in the back?
Joe Harris, Battle Creek, speaking on Resolution 31, which is the water agreement with Emmett Township. What people need to understand is that this agreement is impartial regard to the newly put in high-pressure transmission lines that completes the waterloo in Emmett for the water that will be going to Blue Oval. And I understand that this $13 million worth of piping was put in right under the noses of the Emmett Board because of an apparent rogue supervisor. We signed an NDA with the MEDC, which was basically signing an NDA with Mada by proxy. The supervisor kept everything about the piping from the board. He didn't know anything about it until the November 24th Board Meeting. I was there when it happened. That Board Meeting, Mada was there to try and sell that piping to Emmett for a dollar. And I believe that Emmett would have taken over the maintenance and repairs. This was a total surprise to the Board. And conveniently, the former supervisor was absent from the meeting. And to understand, the newly elected supervisor and the Board are doing whatever they can with a situation in which they didn't know anything about. It has been said that this whole project was pretty much public, but in my opinion, obviously it wasn't when you have signed NDAs, a Board who was kept out of the loop and the public who wasn't informed. It was said that there were emails between Mada's attorney and the former supervisor. I have publicly challenged Mada's attorney to produce those emails and give them to the Emmett Board so as to be transparent in what occurred. Regardless if this pipeline were to benefit the public or not, in my opinion, it was done in a non-transparent way. That's where my concern lies. My hope is that Battle Creek and Emmett leadership can work together in good faith to come up with a fair contract. Transparency with this whole deal is tantamount to a successful and fair agreement. In addition, I understand that the lift stations will be part of this contract. A few days before the Emmett Board Meeting this month, it was sprung on the Board that $200,000 in repairs needed to be done to Lift Station 38. And because of those needed repairs, Battle Creek didn't want to maintain that particular lift station. From my understanding, there was a particular agreement in place in which Battle Creek would maintain the water lines. And I believe the contract had a clause that included the lift stations, including Lift Station 38. And this brings up the question, if Battle Creek was maintaining Lift Station 38, why was it in such bad shape in the first place? Maybe someone in authority can investigate that issue because as far as I can tell, Emmett Township is getting a $200,000 bill for something that may not be their responsibility. Again, I'm hoping that both parties will be transparent. That's the most important part. Hope they'll communicate with each other, make sure that all the leadership involved on both sides are informed as well as the public, so that this contract can be fair and successful to each party involved. So thank you.
Thank you Jill for your comments. We have a trustee here from Emmett Township. Would you like to speak for a minute or? Thank you.
Ryan Leonard, Emmett Township. And I really wasn't planning on speaking, however, I think Mr. Harris did a great job of laying it out there. I think there, as a Board Member for Emmett Township, he's right, a lot of the stuff was, when it comes to that water line being put in our township, we didn't really know anything about it until they came and asked us to take ownership over it and agree to maintaining it. So we've just got to do our research on that and, you know, and feel comfortable about that before we go any further. And then, you know, as far as that lift station goes, there's more research to be done on that as well. Obviously, that's a huge expense to our township. And I'm a new Board Member at Emmett Township. I've only been on the Board for a few months now and this is all sort of news to me as well. I really wish that that lift station hadn't gone so long and gotten the, got into the condition that it's in, but here we are. And so I really hope that we can get that taken care of in a way that doesn't, that doesn't hurt our township too bad. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Leonard. We appreciate it. And is the honeymoon over yet now, since you're a new trustee?
No.
Thanks. Autumn Smith?
Good evening. I'm speaking also on 80 and 81. I too have been to many Emmett meetings. I saw how this was sprung on them blindly. Their former outgoing supervisor was the only one that signed an NDA. I believe I've compared the NDAs that she signed are the same that all except two of you have signed. You guys were not present. And a lot of the thing is transparency. I also know Mr. Kowalski of Marshall Township, he also tried to FOIA things from you guys, just trying to get information to find out, and you guys were citing national security threats to deny the documents. And then it's awful funny because when I got your NDAs, the NDA specifically told you how to hide documents from people. That's exactly what you guys signed, was how to withhold documents from the public, what to file them under, what to deny them under, what to give, what not to give. And then, like Mr. Leonard said, he's coming onto the Board and they're getting all these bills and stuff, and I was at the meeting too, and even the attorney didn't know what was going on. So the lack of transparency, the lack of honesty, also the fact that this is asking them to sign a memorandum of understanding for 5 million gallons of water per day. That's going to do a lot to the aquifers and what's that going to do to our bills, our water bills? When are we going to get a break? I mean, I only use like a couple cubic feet a month and my bill's 60, 70, 80 bucks. And now we're going to be providing the CCP battery plant, who's been blacklisted by the Pentagon, even the Pentagon won't do business with them, and you guys are going to provide them our water. to provide them our water? You're going to screw Emmett with a lift station that you guys failed to maintain, probably to blackmail them, in my opinion. If you don't do this, you know, that's how a lot of this stuff works. I do not support this at all because it was done in secrecy. I do not support it. I've been up here many times. I feel it is violation of, you know, aiding the enemy when the CCP is our enemy. And like I said, the frickin' Pentagon won't even do business with them. What the hell are we doing business with them and providing them water? Really? I really hope, you guys can walk this back. And anytime Mr. Lindsay's in the room, you can expect that there is nothing good to come of that. Thank you.
County Commissioner Dominic Oh, would you like to make any comments? Welcome.
Dominic Oh, County Commissioner for District 1. First of all, I congratulate you all of you. I know it's been a couple months, but you know, I, you guys have been meeting since November, but we only had two meetings so far. So, I'd like to, I don't really have a, should I say like an invitation, not announcement? This Saturday at Burma Center, there will be 77th Annual Chin National Day, Chin National Anniversary, so it will be, the program will start about 6:00 PM. But you can show up about 3:00.
I'm going to have to ask you to speak to something on our agenda. We can talk about the event at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
All right. So, thank you, everyone, and I just, I don't have very much update at this point, but I'd like to learn from what you guys do, and I try to come over here every, at least once a month. So, that's what I'm trying to show up and then see what's going on. So, I like to learn from you guys and help me to understand. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes, John?
John Kinefick, 234 South Avenue. There's no way in three minutes I can cover all the resolutions I want to talk about. Beginning just with the presentations of ARPA, it's a wonderful concept. A lot of people were helped, and within some months, we'll go from $36 trillion federal debt to $37 trillion. We're heading in that direction. You had one here that says 78, you're going to purchase some buses, four low-floor transit buses, for $1,124,348. Didn't, two commission meetings ago, you applied and approved a resolution to ask money because the transit system was going bankrupt and you wanted more money to subsidize what was already failing? Isn't that designed incompetence? Finally, I'd like to talk about the system, which is both 80 and 81. I did read up some of the backup material, and it is 5 million gallons a day. It also says in both of those, Emmett Township and Penfield, excuse me, Emmett Township and the other one, I believe, Penfield, says that not only will you, the City of Battle Creek, charge Penfield and Emmett Township, you'll also maintain those structures in this backup material like you did in the past, which apparently, it's not important and somebody else has to pay for that. Finally, last but not least, by next week, we will go from $226 trillion on the uninsured debt liability, it'll be $227 trillion. Well, it takes less than 36 days to go from one zero to another hundred, to another trillion dollars. And I hope you be very careful on the weather. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll go to introduction of ordinance. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
On November 7, 2023, the City Commission amended Ordinance 882.21, which consolidated two pilots for the Blue Light redevelopment project to take place at the former Kmart site at 200 Southwest Capital Avenue. Under the 2023 amendment, construction was to commence on April 1, 2025, and a certificate of occupancy was to be issued by December 31, 2026. In addition, the development was to consist of 96 residential units, of which 48 were to be subject to the restrictions of the low-income housing tax credit program, and the remaining 48 were to be reserved for workforce housing. This ordinance introduction extends the construction and occupancy deadlines by one year to April 1, 2026, and December 31, 2027, respectively. This amendment also allows the Blue Light redevelopment project to create up to 96 residential units, at least 48 of which will be served for the LIHTC program, and with the remaining units reserved for workforce housing.
I would like to move for the introduction of the ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to introduce ordinance 01-2025. Are there any public comments at this time? Are there any public comments?
We've done those already.
We did the public comment.
We already did those?
We already did the public comment?
Oh, no, this is on the introduction.
We combined them.
We combined them.
Yeah, Mayor, under the commission's revised rules, the ordinance introduction is included as one of the NDAs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. My memory is slipping. There you had your opportunity, John.
This is our first one since then, though.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the introduction of ordinance 01-2025? Our Blue Light special has begun, so that has been approved. Next item on the agenda is commission comment regarding medium business.
I'd like to move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Support.
The movement is supported to approve the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions about that? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda? The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 80, 76, excuse me, 76.
Each year, American Legal Publishing updates and revises the city codebook based upon the ordinances and resolutions previously adopted by the City Commission. This resolution seeks approval for the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
I'd like to move for the approval of Resolution 76.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 76. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 76? Resolution 76 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 77.
This resolution authorizes the city manager or their designee to execute and file applications for federal assistance on behalf of the City of Battle Creek with the Federal Transit Administration for federal assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23, United States Code, or other federal statutes authorizing a project administered by the Federal Transit Administration. The City of Battle Creek may request urbanized area formula program assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. 5307, either alone or in addition to other federal assistance administered by the Federal Transit Administration as the designated recipient. This resolution also authorizes the city manager or their designee to execute and file with its applications the annual certifications and assurances and other documents the Federal Transit Administration requires before awarding a federal assistance grant or cooperative agreement. The city manager or their designee is authorized to execute grant or cooperative agreement with the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the City of Battle Creek.
I would like to move for the approval of Resolution 77.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 77. Are there any comments by the commission? Ted, do you want to clarify anything?
No. Mayor, just to reiterate that this is essentially paperwork that's needed to be on file with the federal government, with the FDA, in order to make us eligible to receive federal dollars. I think our form was a little outdated. I think it was last updated in 2012, so we need to get these forms updated.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, hearing no other comments, would you please vote on Resolution 77? Resolution 77 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 78.
The City of Battle Creek Transit has received a grant to purchase four low-floor transit buses. This resolution, if approved, authorizes a contract for four low-floor transit buses from Transportation Equipment Sales Corporation in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,124,348.
I'd like to move for the approval of Resolution 78.
Support.
The movement is supported to approve Resolution 78. Are there any comments by the commission? Commissioner Simmons?
So, I guess a couple of questions to the city interim city manager, and then if you want to delegate that, because it kind of ties in with what's going on with the TAC and maybe Commissioner Morris would like to chime in. My first question, I guess, I think I might know the answer, but I want some confirmation on that. We had a discussion here a few meetings ago about federal funding, federal and state funding, that we're still the fiduciary, even though the TAC has been formed and has already sent out the tax bills to us all, that we're still the fiduciary for these federal until they get their paperwork in order. And I'm assuming this purchase is, kind of falls under that, that we have to be the one that executes this, and this, by the way, is 100% grant money, is my understanding, so.
Correct, Commissioner. And this particular grant, maybe you recall, we secured this grant, I'm going to say, back in 2020, and it was a grant that would allow us to replace roughly about 70% of our fleet. And I think you may recall that over time, we have been ordering vehicles. We didn't do it all at once because we didn't want to have to replace all the vehicles at once. So, over time, we have been making these purchases. This particular grant, I think, is one of the last purchases that we will make under that particular grant, but as you suggested, those dollars were obligated to the City of Battle Creek, so we are the ones that need to make this purchase.
Okay, and then, I guess, the follow-on. We still own this equipment. And at some point or another, maybe you can explain to us when we will be transferring that equipment to TAC to then operate, or TAC will be contracting with the city, we'll still own it, and they'll contract with us. What's kind of the timeframe on that?
Yeah, and you're correct. I mean, eventually, these assets would be transferred to the TAC. And I think I saw Mallory here. Mallory, you're welcome to come up. I'll give you the short answer, which is, we're in process, and the intent is, or the hope is, to be able to transfer assets by October 1st of this year. But there's a process, right? And that it might include some things that you mentioned, Commissioner, which could be a short-term operating agreement in the interim and a few other logistics we need to work our way through, and I'll let Mallory comment a little further on that.
Yeah. I think the important thing to remember about probably 90% of our assets is that they were 100% grant-funded. So, everything from our computers and office furniture to all of our vehicles, and they have a useful life and a federal interest until that useful life is met. So, for all of the assets that still have a useful life, those would transfer over to the authority.
And we wouldn't, we wouldn't charge them for them. Since they were granted to us, then we would just then transfer that grant of the property over to them.
Yes, most likely.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mallory?
I guess then address the question of how will, in the interim, if it's until, we're waiting until October 1st to turn over all the assets, will TAC be contracting with the city to continue operating?
So, some of those conversations are happening now, and what that interim period looks like. Assets are the easy thing to transfer, but the TAC needs to get some stuff in order first, like designated recipient status, liability insurance, things like that. The operational agreements of employees operating vehicles owned by whom, I think that information is still to come.
Okay.
By October 1st.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the reports that Commissioner Morris has given us from the recent TAC meetings, but as soon as that information is available and that's fleshed out a little bit more, I hope that can be shared with the commission and the community, community who has a lot of questions still on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Any other questions of Mallory? Do we have any other questions about this resolution? Hearing none, please vote on Resolution 78. Resolution 78 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 79.
Resolution number 416 dated June 7, 2022, approve the purchase of a new fire apparatus using the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. The fire department needs to replace an aging fleet vehicle and request authorization using this same cooperative purchasing contract for the acquisition of a new fire apparatus. This resolution, if approved, authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract and issue a purchase order for a new fire apparatus from First Due Equipment Sales and Repair Incorporated in a not-to-exceed amount of $663,619. The city manager or their designee is authorized to execute change orders up to 10% in aggregate for city-initiated and pre-approved changes during this project.
I would like to move for the approval of Resolution 79.
Support.
It's moved and supported to approve Resolution 79. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 79? Resolution 79 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 80.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to execute the attached water services contract with the City of Marshall or one with substantially similar terms and conditions approved by the city attorney.
I would like to move for the approval of Resolution 80.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 80. Are there any questions by the commission? Commissioner Simmons?
So, a question and I guess a comment in this would be applicable to both 80 and 81. One of the questions that I get frequently is when, and we share our water system with the surrounding municipalities, Emmett Township and Springfield, and I think it goes into Bedford and a little bit into Lee Roy or Newton Township. And there, especially in Emmett Township, and now we're seeing in Marshall, considerable development that has put a demand, a greater demand on our water system than it had the capacity to. So, we've done a lot of upgrades, or we're talking about doing a lot of upgrades. We all have to pay for the upgrades, including the residents, who were perfectly fine with our existing system, but now we have to spend and bond millions and millions of dollars to upgrade the system, and we're all going to share this burden. And so, I guess my question is, and I know we get a lot of federal funds and strings are attached, that you have to supply metro area, those kind of things, but at what point do we say, for example, the mayor mentioned earlier, the Edge Hill, Edge Brook Lift Station, that 10 million gallons that we had to increase in size to handle the sewage from development in primarily Emmett Township, and we're all helping subsidize that, at what point do we say, we're as big as we want to get? Okay, we cannot continue extending now all the way to Marshall. What's next? Can you kind of address that? And how much of this growth, economic development in the region is great, but are we, as water subscribers here within the city, helping to subsidize?
Yeah, and Commissioner, I think there's a bit of, I think, a philosophic. Yeah, and Commissioner, I think there's a bit of, I think, a philosophic nature to your question, which is, to what point do we balance our desire to achieve economic development with that cost burden on local citizens? So I'm not sure that I know distinctly at what point we would draw that line. You know, obviously, these kinds of resolutions come to the commission, because the commission is the policymaking body, and are certainly going to be part of and influence what the resolution to that question might look like. But I mean, you're right. I mean, obviously, we do rate studies, and in those rate studies, we include capital investment in the system, and that is reflected in the rates. In this particular instance, we did get a significant amount of support from the state to do most of the infrastructure needed. And in this case, based on our wholesale agreement, which is what is before you this evening with Marshall, obviously, we're covering the costs from the user in Marshall in this particular case. So, you know, hopefully, that burden wasn't placed upon the rate, or the users, the customers, in the various jurisdictions who are receiving water from us. So again, I think it's something we're going to have to analyze on an ongoing basis, because it's certainly a reasonable question to ask, and there are capacity limits. We're not anywhere near our capacity limits at this point. But if the operation in Marshall was operating at full capacity based on their original projections, we would inch towards that number, and we would have to upgrade our facility further if there was another larger user that came on board. So I think we have to continually look at all of that as we make decisions about how and where to invest in the system.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't expect you to have this answer right now, Ted, but I would be interested in kind of historic water usage. We've had some factories that used to be in the city that are no longer, that probably used a considerable amount of water. And so obviously, they're not drawing from our system. So I would be interested in seeing kind of where we've been, where we are, and where we project to be. And I understand that I didn't tell you I was looking for that data, and you probably don't have it at your fingertips.
I do not. Yes, but we could certainly do some analysis, yeah.
That would be helpful.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution Eighty? Resolution Eighty has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution Eighty-One. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to execute the attached Water Services Contract with the Charter Township of Emmett, or one with substantially similar terms and conditions approved by the city attorney.
I would like to move for the approval of Resolution Eighty-One.
Support.
The movement is supported to approve Resolution Eighty-One. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing no comments, I just would like to thank everyone, both the Emmett Township Board and their supervisor, and then Marshall, who may have assisted, and also want to thank Richard Lindsay and his associate that's with him. I think this is a historic agreement for everyone in our county, and I think that the City of Battle Creek is doing the right thing in working and partnering with everyone involved with the development of the Blue Oval. So congratulations, and would you please vote at this time? Resolution Eighty-One has been approved. Congratulations. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you. To come forward to the podium, you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Dominic, you want to talk now about that event on Saturday? Thank you. Come on. And if you've never been to one of these events, you got to go, because there's a lot of challenges. The dance is the best part.
Yes.
Just ask Chris.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to make it only one time, and I just, you know, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
This Saturday, we, at Burma Center, there will be Seventy Seventh National Day celebration. Everyone is welcome, no fees to, no entry fee. So, but you, we got a lot of food, you know, available between 3:00 and 6:00, so you can try it out. The program will start at 6:00 PM, and I'd like to see all of you to come and join, and have a good time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments at this time? Yes, Joe?
I gotta watch where I'm going. Joe Harris, Battle Creek. Just a few things. I always try to give credit when credit's due, and I can't say a whole lot about the situation, but I got to thank the Battle Creek Police Department. Shannon, you know why I'm thanking you guys? Thank you guys. Thank the officers, too. I appreciate it. I want to thank Dominic for being here tonight. It's a rare thing, sir, when you see a county commissioner come to one of their district local meetings. I think that's a great thing to start. I appreciate that. You know, water limits were mentioned, and I wasn't going to say anything about that, but particular water limits in the future. And I don't know if any of you have seen it, but I've seen future proposed plans from the MDC about a thousand-acre mega site in Emmett, in case the landowner decides to sell. And I've seen two or three of the drawings of what they're proposing, and something for future to think about, because that could bring a lot more water through Battle Creek, through Emmett. If you're interested in those plans, I can get them to you, because I've seen them. A friend of mine FOIA'd those. And so they're about, yeah, well, it's actually about 200 pages, but it's pretty extensive. And in regard to transparency, don't know if many people know, but, you know, you can get on the check registry in Battle Creek, which is a cool thing, so you know where your money is going, which is great. You got to go to the government, go to the finance place. I have a question, and I don't know if anyone can answer it, but it's in regard to a check number 4100903, invoice 2025, numbers ending in 427. It's for four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred, four hundred and eight, six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. It's for 225 Western Star 47X trucks. Does anybody know what that's about? Snowplow. Okay.
Thank you.
That would be great if they could say snowplow. I would understand that. Thank you. I mean, because I'm looking at them like, that is a lot of money for, so that was what I needed, so, but I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Yes.
Good evening, Reese Edkins, 84 South, 23rd Street. Listening to the presentation from Neighborhood Inc. really concerns me, because she sits right up here, and she says that they're parents, and then keeping people in housing, keeping people from being homeless. They did help us out with six months' worth of rent. I have asked and been asking to get that extended for at least three more months, if not six, due to health reasons and due to the reasons that we, at this time, do not have funding. I have been told by two different commissioners, who are trying to help, that are getting hit deadlines like I am, and walls like I am, that they can't do it, because there's an 18-month period waiting time in between getting help, which I find that very weird, when just back during COVID, when Neighborhood Inc. was helping people with rent, they up to, I do believe it was a little over two years worth of rent without no questions at all. Now, all of a sudden, it's, well, we're only doing six months, and then you got to wait 18 months. But yet, they sit up here and they say, we're trying to keep people in housing. That don't make sense, because if you're trying to keep people in housing, if somebody comes to you and says, "Look, we need a little bit more help," you should be willing to help them and not tell them they have to wait 18 months to get more help, and then put them out on the street and have more homeless people before you bother to help them anymore. I mean, it's contradicting what you're saying. And it just, it makes no sense. And you commissioners sit up there and give them funds for this, whether it's ARPA or other funding, and they're putting guidelines that you guys don't even know they're putting on. I mean, I talked to one commissioner, and they looked at me like, what do you mean, 18 months? Where'd that come from? I mean, we need to really look at what's being done with this funding, because there's guidelines being put on that really shouldn't be, and that were not being put on during COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Any other public comments at this time? Autumn, did you raise your hand? All right, thank you very much. I didn't see it.
I'm short.
Well, just being honest.
Okay, that's a Kodak moment. All right, I just wanted to say, one, as far as the ARPA funding, thank God that's over. Two, as far as funding for housing and stuff, it's sad. I understand people struggle. But man, you should see where all that dirty USAID money is going, right in our community, too. Star Commonwealth, Neighborhoods Inc., a lot of nonprofits around here are getting that money laundered. So if anybody's expecting to get any more funding for anything, they could probably not expect that. Thank God they're cutting that off. Also, I just wanted to say, again, I agree with what Mr. Harris said. I, too, saw the site planned, and I am afraid that probably, maybe in a couple more years, or however long, when they do expand out by Blue Oval, the Sacreiter mega site, I believe it's what it's called, that you guys are going to be, you know, coming forward, having the same requests be made to increase the water, increase the infrastructure and all of this, and it's just not going to stop. And like I said, perhaps your guys' tax abatements, you guys like to give out like candy, could have went to fund this, rather than it come on our backs and stuff. If they want to do business in the city, they should pay the fee, like the rest of us do, and, you know, pay taxes. Like I said, I don't mind giving a tax break if they, you know, show that they're being a good steward of the city. If they say they're going to do 3,500 jobs, and they actually do 3,500 jobs, then okay. After they prove it, maybe give them a little bit of a tax cut, but it's falling on us. They're not paying taxes. If I don't pay taxes after so long, I lose my house, and we're just giving them a free pass. And that's got to stop, and I'm really, really concerned about you guys executing this after they've been blacklisted, after everything. There's even stuff coming out that they're not even going to be possibly opening in 2026, like they said. It's been kicked down to 2028. So what's going to happen if this infrastructure is put in, and all of this is going forward, and breaks are put on it, and it doesn't happen? Do we get a refund? No. But it is concerning. Like I said, they've been blacklisted by the DOD. They won't do business with the Pentagon. The Pentagon won't do business with CATAL. And I think it's very, very serious. It's a national security threat. Obviously, you guys couldn't even tell us about our local issues. It's a national security threat. It's obviously a national security threat on their end, too, if they're being blacklisted. And so this might need something to be forwarded to Pam Bondi, Cash Patel, you know, people like that, maybe Tulsi Gabbard and some of the new administration to look at and see what criminal activity or real terroristic threat could be going on on a local level. Thank you.
Richard Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Richard Lindsay. I represent MADEA, the Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance. I want to thank you for the historic decision that you made tonight to approve these agreements. And I want to thank the city attorney for his hard work, including these together, together with the Emmett Attorney and the City of Marshall Attorney. This regional solution is very exciting. One of my first introductions to government with the Constable Dispatch Authority, which Commissioner Simmons was part of back in the day, was a regional effort by this city and the other cities in the county. And, you know, over the course of the last several years, it saved millions and millions of dollars, and shows what the cities can do when they cooperate with each other and do better things together. So I want to emphatically say, if you have any question about Blue Oval, go park at the Marshall Township Hall, about 502, on any weekday, and you can see what it looks like. You see 2,000 people roll out of there that are working on this right now. So it is fully underway, is not in any way being slowed or stopped. The only thing that happened, actually, this was negotiated over a year ago, and then there was a FOIA request, and it became a news article, because MADEA did transfer on January 17th, transferred the property to Blue Oval, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Ford Motor Company. There's no cattle ownership in the company. Cattle, of course, is licensing technology to Ford as part of this. But the plan is going forward, full bore, full blast. The plan is that they would begin operation in early 2026, mid-2026, depending on exactly, you know, when things are complete. So we're very excited to see it go forward. And I've been involved in things for a while, as you know. And, you know, before anything happens in Emmett Township to build out what I would say is basically the Sacreiter property across from the casino, there's 1,500 acres left on the Blue Oval property and on the major campus. And so the water agreement that we're talking about basically is to provide the capacity to be able to do that, right? We are planning ahead for what that will look like for the next 10 or 15 years. Will there come a time at some point in the future when there's development on this Sacreiter? Yes, maybe. If you ever talk to Bob Sacreiter, bless his soul, he would tell you for two hours about what he thought would happen on that property. But it also hasn't happened in the last 25 years, so I don't know when it'll happen. But we're very excited, and Marshall, we thank you very much for your support of this project, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We'd also like to thank Bill Kim for his hard work. He brought a lot of experience to the plate, and I really appreciate the hard work of all the people involved. So thanks. Any other comments? Yes, Jeff?
Jeff Breedlove, and I live in Emmett, but I have a lot of things going on in Battle Creek. And I just want to say this, I may not have to say this, but I just want to give another acknowledgement to NIBC, because all the hard work that they've been doing, and it may or may not be known, but during the pandemic, we were given a lot of, a lot more grants than what we were given or are given now. So we were able to help out a lot more people. And I know Whitney has done an incredible job by getting these grants and getting them to people that need them. We have a long, long, big list of people that put in applications for grants. We're not able to help out everybody in every instance. And there's, sometimes there's a waiting period to help out these people. But the programs that NIBC has been doing in the last couple of years have really increased, and their commitment to the community has increased. And I just want to also mention, Lisa is now the financial person in NIBC. The ARPA dollars helped get her into that position, which, it was done by an outside firm. Now, being inside, it's even, it's easier to work with. We get our, there's no delay in financial statements. It's more transparent to the board and, I think, to the community. So just putting out there again, the acknowledgement to NIBC. Of course, I'm on the board, but still, just, and I don't do a lot of work. I mean, I just kind of come in and, you know, maybe vote every once in a while, but you know how it goes. But I just want to put that out there. But thank you, guys.
Jeff, thank you for your service on the committee. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? John?
John Keneffick, 234 South Avenue. I admit I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I'm not the dumbest either. I also do not like being conned or swindled by government. Lately, at the state level, we're hearing that the roads are not repaired, even though the governor, her campaign originally was to fix the roads and haven't been. That is not accidental. And then we read in the paper how trucks that are carrying certain loads pay extra money, because it costs more money to do two trips using the fuel to take them to the location, which means you have a cost increase at the normal place where that place is being sold, whether it be food or anything else. Then we have what the City of Battle Creek does, something similar. You wait till something happens, or excuse me, you wait. You wait till something happens, or excuse me, you wait, you need to have something done, and you immediately ignore it, like the fire stations. You could have fixed this problem, you could have put money aside, you didn't have to take out a loan. You did it on purpose. You did it intentionally. And that extra money, whether it be at the state level, which, by the way, if you didn't know, this building has been fixed by state funds because no one here had any intelligence to put any money aside for the next 40 years before the place needed fixing. My point being is that, since I'm a little bit older, I can remember when I was a little bit younger, when I was 20 years old, and I remember the taxation that was hitting everybody back then. It is not like it is now. People go to work, they work 40 hours a week, 20-plus hours of that goes to some sort of taxes they don't see, or loans that have been taken out by governments, causing us to pay more money than we need to pay. State is doing the same thing as you, and you're doing the same thing as state. I would look at your numbers, and finally, last but not least, in regards to NIBC, I remember speaking here a long time ago, up here, and they were asking for $100,000 from the city treasury, and they were talking about how effective they were, and I stood up here and said, well, if they're that dang effective, how come they're not operating with all the donations and loans they get from the city? They cannot stay operational without money from somebody else. And as, as I've explained before, that somebody else is the taxpayer. Even though they don't see it coming out of their pockets, that's where it's coming from, whether it be federal, state, or local. I suggest you, which is not going to happen, get your act together so we don't become more indentured servants to all our governments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, are there any commission comments? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Back from Washington, DC.
I survived the trip to Washington, DC. There's a lot of things lately in the news and a lot of just sad stories, and I just want to remind people, we, we need to do a little better job at taking care of one of each other and checking up on each other. If you could just do that, just making sure neighbor's okay. If you're missing someone you haven't seen in a while, give them a call or make sure that, just do welfare checks on it, and especially with this cold weather coming up this week. Please make sure, take care of your pets, bring them in. I read an article yesterday about, there's no reason to put your dog outside this week. So please take those, like, in the heart and, and take care of everybody. Our other thing is, is I just want to promote our neighborhood planning councils, the MPCs. They're really good places to meet other neighbors, and if you're not going there, please go. We had one recently where we talked about the land bank. They showed up and decided to help out with people wanting to purchase land bank, and learned a lot more about that, so that was that. But then tomorrow is one of the highlights of the Kella Community College Black History Month is the luncheon tomorrow. I mentioned it at the meeting last time, but tomorrow's the luncheon from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Bend, Soul Food. Yes, thank you. The Soul Food Luncheon, and so if you get the opportunity to go out there, and I just want to talk about what Dominic said earlier, also the Burma Center, if you can make it out there Saturday and go to that event, they're, they're always such a great place to meet more people in the community, just get out and, and again, check on one another and, and enjoy the Burmese food that's out there, because who wouldn't say no to that? So, thank you, Mayor, for the time.
You're welcome. Any other public, I mean, commission comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for attending.